Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 5, 2011 Meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Drayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. Councilmember Friedman, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Absolutely. Please join me in renewing our pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation which will be delivered by Reverend Rich Garner of the First United Methodist Church.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers all gathered here, let us together pray. Most holy God who challenges us to decide with justice and equips us with hearts of compassion, we come to this day of decision for Glendale with the expectation that all who participate in it have the best of intentions for the city. Even as these decisions unfold over the hours ahead, so we are charged with responsibility for other choices. Guide us to discern a way forward that will serve the entire city and provide opportunities for this city to serve others even throughout the world. Grant us a clear vision of the possibilities that lie ahead and guide us into civil conversation and good decisions, decisions that will sustain and develop fruitful bonds between neighbors and neighborhoods, that we together may show our concern for those who need our care even as we rejoice in the many gifts that are ours to enjoy. As leaders, remind us that we are to be employed in activity that enhances life in this city, not for a privileged few, but for every one of its citizens. May our prayers enlighten, encourage, and empower us and others. Amen.
May we have your report?
Agenda for the April 5, 2011 Regular Meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, March 31, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thanks. Next item?
Next item at presentation and appointments at 3:00 A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of April 12, 2011.
Ms. Mullins?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. The agenda for the Housing Authority Meeting for April 12, Public Hearing, Director of Community Development Regarding Section 8 Public Housing Agency Annual Plan for Fiscal 2011-2012, Director of Community Services and Parks Regarding City of Glendale Joining the Hundred Thousand Homes Campaign. That concludes housing for redevelopment. There's no items on the agenda, but we do have a joint public meeting between Redevelopment Agency and the Housing Authority, and the item is Director of Community Development Regarding Redevelopment Agency and Housing Authority Accomplishments for the Period of April 2010 to March 2011. For the council meeting, you have Director of Public Works Regarding Riverdale Drive, Maple Street Neighborhood Greenway, Project specification number 3439, General Manager of GWP Regarding Thermoplastic Single-Ply Roofing Installation for GWP at the Grace Empower Plant. We also have Chief of Police Regarding Establishment, a Personal Management Program for the Police Department with the use of asset or forfeiture funds to procure software, hardware, and service agreement to establish a staffing management system and internal affairs tracking and management system. Director of Public Works Regarding Verdugo Road Rehabilitation Projects, specification number 3410, Director of Human Resources Regarding Professional Legal Services for the City of Glendale in Performance of Audit Compliance with Fair Labor Standard, and also Director of Human Resources Regarding Funding of FLSA Audit of Compliance. Then, under action items, we have Fire Chief Regarding Providing Contract Fire and EMS Service Dispatching Service to the City of Alhambra, Chief of Police and Director of Information Services Regarding Replacement of the Current Police Computer Aided Dispatch and Records Management Systems Under an Early Adapter. And last item is a hearing, Director of Public Works Regarding Grants of Franchise and Pacific Pipeline System for the Operation of Maintenance of Oil Pipeline. And that concludes the agenda for next week.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
Before I go to my colleagues, I would request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of Howard J. Thalen, Judge Thalen. He was a Glendale resident and our former State Assemblyman. He died on March 25 at the age of 90. He was born in 1921 in Van Nuys. However, he moved to Glendale and graduated from Glendale High School in 1939. After graduation, he served with a medical battalion in the South Pacific as a U.S. Army Corporal during World War II. He earned degrees from UCLA and USC, and he was elected to the State Assembly where he represented Glendale from 1956 to 1966. He then served as a Los Angeles County Municipal Court Justice from 1966 to 1976, and then in the L.A. County Superior Court from 1976 to 1987 when he retired. He is survived by his wife Vivian, his sons David, William, and Richard, and his granddaughter, Katrina. Mr. Weaver?
Just briefly, if you're watching this show tonight, and if you haven't voted yet today, you have until 8 o'clock to find your polling place and get down, get out and vote. Your vote could make a difference. If you don't know where your polling place is, I believe you can call 548-4000. Somebody over there will tell you where your polling place is. So, don't pass up the chance to vote. Turn us off and go out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
Well, it's not an easy thing to run for office, as I discovered a few years ago. It's an awful lot of work, and sometimes you have to take a lot of abuse, but it's an interesting process. And I want to thank all of the candidates who ran in this election cycle. Regardless of what their results are, every single person who ran brought something very special to the race and helped engage the city in an important dialogue. So, I just want to acknowledge all of the candidates and their service and their hard work, and I wish them all well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Quintero, Mr. Weaver, Mr. Drayman? I have a few items. I was very happy to attend an event at Temple Sinai this past weekend. It is the Shomertsedek Award Gala Dinner, and Shomertsedek means Guardians of Righteousness. And four very unique individuals were honored by the temple. It was Mary Greenberg, Roger Endana Bar, and Eileen Blicker. So, congratulations to everyone at Temple Sinai and their award winners. The next item is, I think, very important, very critical. This is a very significant event that has recently occurred in Sacramento regarding the progress of the 710 Tunnel. The cracks are beginning to form in the 710 Tunnel, folks. And by cracks, I mean there was a recent opinion by the Legislative Analyst's Office who opines that the primary funding mechanism for this $10 billion-plus tunnel, five-mile tunnel, 300-foot-deep tunnel, may be an illegal funding plan. The PPP, Public-Privet Partnership, is, in his opinion, a non-permitted type of funding because essentially, public resources are being given over to a private company, and that private company is obtaining profits from the operation and management. This is not the death blow to the 710 Tunnel, but it's one more punch in the gut to their plans to ram this tunnel through. The sad thing is that millions and millions of dollars have been spent, to this day, on all the studies and the meetings and outreach and engineering, and unfortunately, in the end, it may all be wasted money. So, before the MTA Board this month, I'm going to make a motion to immediately cease all work and payment to all consultants on the 710 Tunnel until a final legal opinion clearing the PPP funding mechanism for the 710 Tunnel is approved either by the Legislative Analyst's Office or by a court of law in the state. So, I think that's important news for anyone following the 710 Tunnel issue. My last item is, I'm happy now, now that the election season is over, almost over, not over soon enough for several of us, I'd like to dust off the ethics ordinance that we had out of courtesy to all candidates and not have the politicalization of the issue during the time of the campaigning, so we could discuss it with cool heads and not be playing to any particular group or members of the public. I'd like that dusted off and brought back to us. Included in that ethics ordinance, I know you've worked on it to some degree, and there's a work in progress, so to speak, I would like to have included in our discussion a lobbyist registration program. I would like to see fees charged for people who are lobbying for programs. Those fees would be used and earmarked for the administration of the actual ethics ordinance itself. I'd like to see some blackout dates in which, registered or not, no one could approach a councilman or mayor and discuss items or contracts that are coming before the Board within a, we call it the blackout period, so we can discuss the length of time that that's going to be applicable. I think, I know during the campaign trail, there have been some discussions and some thoughts have come out. I would love to discuss that with everyone and see what options we have and see what would really work best for the City of Glendale. So, do we have a possible date where that could come back to us?
You mentioned this earlier, and I conferred with the city attorney, we've tentatively placed it on the April 26 agenda.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Well, first, I fully support having that discussion. I'm not familiar with the proposed ethics ordinance. I haven't had a chance, I haven't seen it. So, does it include, and if it doesn't, can we add a discussion about eliminating political contributions from any one who contracts with the city or subcontracts with someone who contracts from the city over a certain amount of money?
It's included.
Okay.
The, what I'll also call passing of Measure S, Los Angeles recently adopted Measure O, as well as a whole host of other issues, including but not limited to some, I'll call them tweaks, to our local campaign finance regulations to be now consistent with U.S. Supreme Court dictates in the Citizens United case, as well as looking at perhaps extending some time periods for repayment of debt.
Okay. Glad to hear it. Thank you.
Mr. Drayman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, I also support this. I think it's two things I wanted to make clear. One is, so that the public at home knows, we have an ethics ordinance. This is not new. This is an addition to or an update of. Number one. Number two, one thing that I'd like to see as part of this also is some mechanisms, so, and I've been saying this week after week after week, some mechanisms so that elected officials have a way to know who the subcontractors are that are working on city subsidized projects. As you know, Mr. Mayor, the way this city council was able to find out was by means of our city attorney contacting the receiver and getting the list from them. So, we need a database, I think, or something equivalent to that.
Mr. Weaver?
Include it.
Just remember two things. One, during the campaign, Mr. Drayman will, I think, agree with me, most of the candidates running outside ourselves didn't even know we had an ethics ordinance. By telling me you could get on the city website and see what it is, what we will be looking at is enhancing the ethic ordinance per your request. So, surprising they're running for council and they didn't even know about it. The other thing, Mr. Quintero, maybe he just got the same message. If anybody out there is planning to go to the airport, the Hollywood Way northbound off-ramp has been closed by Caltrans for at least a year. The southbound will be closed shortly. We got a report at the airport meeting this week that a number of the on-and-off ramps, including Burbank Boulevard, will be closed in sequence over the next few years.
Is that for the sound block construction?
I don't know. They're adding the HOV line.
Oh, the HOV line.
That's coming in. So, we have Western already. We're going to have, Lincoln is going to be affected. Lincoln is going to be permanently closed one day. Empire is going to be improved as the main access into the airport. Hollywood Way, as I said, has been closed already. So, over the next few years, it's going to be extremely difficult to get to the airport. So, you better start finding some new routes out there.
Thank you. And, Mr. Howard, just to, I guess, reiterate, I think we've all expressed a desire to bring us as broad a package as possible. It may take more than one meeting to discuss everything and get through it and get public input, so, and I am, I do stand corrected that this is a supplement to our already existing ethics ordinance, and we don't need to rush through it, but let's go through it methodically and in the end, hopefully have something that we're all proud of.
A full package for you.
Thank you. I have nothing else. Is there anything from staff? Mr.?
Just a reminder that, as Councilmember Weaver mentioned, polls are open until 8:00 P.M. Encourage everyone who has not yet done so to go out and vote.
Okay. I'm getting a signal from Ms. Mullins on, as a reminder, on April 25, Monday, the City of Glendale will be sponsoring the Armenian Genocide Commemoration Event. It will be at the Alex Theater at 6:30, and we're, oh, we're probably about three weeks away, and we'll mention more and give you more details as we get closer to that event. We also will be presenting a Man's in Humanity-to-Man video collage, which will be aired on GTV6 throughout the weeks preceding the event. Anything else? Next item, please.
Next item is Consent Items Following a Routine and May Be Acted Upon by One Motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. Your microphone?
I'll move the consent items. Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Next item, please.
At 6 is Oral Communications. This is a portion reserved for announcements.
Thank you. I have one card from Leon Mayor.
Evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council and staff. As a matter of personal privilege, I'd like to make a comment about Howard Thalen. I'm older than most of you, I'm older than all of you, and I remember Mr. Thalen took a political position when he was running for office and holding office, and it went against the mainstream at that time, but it was, he was right. He had the courage of his convictions. He got voted out of office. He knew he was taking that chance when he took that position. Fortunately, he was named as appointed governor, I mean, appointed a Superior Court judge, and he had a great judicial career, but I wanted to make that comment. I'm here for the Friends of the Library and for the library, and we're having Arthur Bartner, Dr. Arthur Bartner, on April 21. That's a Thursday, Central Library. He is the Trojan marching band director. Been director for 40 years, which is a longtime seniority. He beats all the coaches and all the professors and everybody else at USC in longevity. And he's written a book called The Man on the Ladder, and he's going to talk about that book. You can buy it, and he'll sign it, and he's also going to have a show, a film show, and slideshow. And this book is a great book for USC loyalists, for Trojans. And, of course, we've had UCLA, we had John Wooden, we had the coach from UNLV, Eric Parcet, not Eric Parcet.
Jerry Tarkanian.
Jerry Tarkanian. Thank you. And so, we're not prejudiced, but we're proud to present the USC Spirit of Troy Evening on April 21, 7 o'clock, at the Glendale Central Library. Also, on the 4th of May, we're having a very interesting program. The program is called What I Learned at Bhutan, The Happiest Kingdom on Earth, and the main title to that book is Radio Shangri-La, and the author is Lisa Napoli. And I met her. She's a very vibrant personality. She's in journalism, and she's been a journalist for years, and she's going to talk about her book and about her trips to Bhutan, which is a real place. It's actually the real place that Shangri-La wasn't, but it's right there in the Himalayas, and she went there and, too long occasions, and helped the high school kids with their radio program, with a radio station. This will be a great program for everybody, and it'll be a great program for the journalism students throughout our area. So, I urge you to consider going to see Lisa Napoli on May 4, Wednesday, at Central Library. If I have a minute, I have something else that I should call your attention to. We have a gentleman by the name of Tigran Mansurian. Tigran Mansurian is Russian and Armenian, and he's a classical musician, and he's going to be here on Thursday, April 7, at Brand Library Recital Hall, and he's also going to be at the Central Auditorium, April 16 and 17, to talk about the music of Comenists. And he is a classic person, a person that everybody should be making a note of that and trying to make one of those programs. So, that's basically what we have. I'm going to go vote, and where is that meeting about the tunnel?
The tunnel meeting is occurring tonight. It's at...
When's?
The tunnel, well, there's several meetings. There's a scoping meeting tonight at La Cañada High School Cafeteria, about now until about 8 o'clock. The Metro Board meeting that I referred to is on the 4th Thursday of this month.
But there's one tonight at La Cañada High School.
There's one tonight at La Cañada High School.
Going on right now.
Going on right now.
Thank you very much. Any questions about my events?
Yeah. How old are you, Liam?
I'm 85.
I wondered how many years you had on me.
Pardon?
I wondered how many years you had on me.
Now you know. He has one.
Well, I served in the South Pacific, but not with Howard Thalen.
Well, I'm seeing a gentleman tonight. I met, gray hair and white hair, white beard, and he, oh, I mean, he looked fit as a fiddle, like in his 60s. He was on Okinawa, and he fought in Korea. I'm going to see him later tonight. Amazing, the condition he was in for that age. So, you too, World War II.
I play tennis three, four times a week with my wife.
In the service?
Pardon? I say, now.
Now.
Now. Thank you.
That's good for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I've been lucky. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Next item, please, unless we continue with oral communications.
It's your discretion, Mr. Mayor. There are no, there are no action items or any other items besides what I'm told is new business.
Okay. Well, we'll hear the next two speakers who've submitted cards for five minutes. Herbert Milano and Margaret Hammond.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, my name is Herbert Milano. Six years ago, I was wearing a 2005 John Drayman button for this campaign for city council, and I had on my lawn a Frank Quintero lawn sign. At the time, I believed that the needs of the most underrepresented communities would get the commensurate help they needed. I figured we would get adequate and equitable parkland for all residents in all neighborhoods, a truly expansive and inclusive Central Park, more public parking to relieve residents of overflow commercial parking into their streets, less traffic congestion, support for after-school programs, support to augment the community development block grants and nonprofits. But no sooner did Mr. Quintero get elected than he started his campaign for the assembly in the dirtiest campaign statewide for statewide offices I have ever seen. Four years ago, I came before this podium to acclaim the election of John Drayman. I thought we had finally elected a man dedicated to public service. No attachment to any developer, not accountable to city employee unions, prudent with the city's expenditures, attuned to the needs of all communities. But in the last four years, I've learned otherwise. The investments south of the 134 were primarily for the brand commercial corridor. We reconstructed less than one mile of roadway per year, that is, until we got the federal stimulus money. Central Park was not expanded to serve all demographics, and asphalt still covers about a third of the two and a half acres. His promise to support a greater vision for this park failed at the starting gate. Let me tell you about four communities outside of Glendale that show a common roadway, and that's Foothill Boulevard. Today, that roadway stretches for about 15 miles from Cañada, Flintridge, through Lacrosse Center, the county, Glendale, Tahugas, and Sunland. It is all now nearly reconstructed. The last one-third of a mile was reconstructed in just three days, last Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So, the only stretch of Foothill in this repair is between Pennsylvania and Lowell, the Glendale portion. But we will not get reconstruction. We will only get a slurry seal, a cosmetic cover-up that stands in contrast to the efforts of nearby cities. It is my hope that in the next four years, we'll see a change. I'd like to see performant measures for all departments, pension, significant pension reform, adequate parkland for residents, especially for Planning Area 10 that hasn't been served in decades, expansion of Central Park for all demographics, improve roadways for all major thoroughfares in the city, support for after-school programs, lower electricity rates commensurate with conservation efforts by families, full and immediate disclosure of councilmen's appointment calendar. These can all be accomplished if we focus on the essential purpose of democracy, the concept of justice. Thank you very much.
You, Margaret Hammond?
Good evening, your honor, mayors, and city council and staff and...
Audience?
Anyway, let's hope there's somebody out there watching. I don't know, or what they're watching. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I've been a 50-some-year resident of South Glendale, Adams Hill, to be exact, and proud of it. The reason, now, last week I missed coming and the subject that I wanted to address was the ANC asking for a banquet hall permit that, when we gave them, gave them $12 million for a building on Brand Boulevard, gave them the land on Louis Street, paid for all or whatever, everything going for it, coming to a sum of $12 million. And don't look at me, I've got the figures, so there's no use. I talked about it, and I've got them. So, and not only that, but we paid for a walkway. No parking. They didn't have to have any parking. One of the things that the city does again, don't worry about parking, and built them a bridge across to our parking structure. Now, if they have a banquet hall, how can you see how many of those people will park in that structure, or how many of them will have the valet parking, will park in that structure? I know that there are other businesses in the area. I happen to belong to one group that I know will suffer. We already have from the overflow from the Americana, and will probably suffer... will probably suffer even more from the opening of that ANC building. And the banquet hall, what, and they're going to be serving liquor. This is next door to a church, next door to a school, next, and how many liquor permits are already, have been applied for and granted? I think Caruso asked for 17. I recall, I got up here and talked about it, for Americana, and I guess he got them all. He always gets whatever he wants. I mean, all he's got to do is snap his fingers, and we run and hand it to him on a platter. So, anyway, my feeling on, as far as the banquet hall, I don't think it's necessary. You already have the Royal whatever over there. You have the Brand View something or other that I understand is no changed hands, but they were also using that parking structure, and so were Royal. Royal is now using for valet parking or extra parking, the public library property that was assigned to. I also have those records, I kept all that, from the commissioner, the police, whoever signed off that they could use that property. So, I guess I'm pretty upset. I happened to be very ill last week, had that crazy bug whatever that came around and couldn't go out for a whole week from my birthday till the next week. I probably partied too much on my birthday. But anyway, whatever. All I'm saying is, we don't need another banquet hall. And the people requested information for the list of banquet halls, and were told they could not have that. And I did have it from the Planning Department and from two or three years ago. So, why isn't it now public knowledge again? And that's, it will go in, I can go into it another time. Right now, my other thing is that, today, I went to vote, okay, down on Mariposa, and I get in there, okay, and I said, I wanted to vote. Oh, well, what's your name, your address? What now? Oh, well, your mail-in ballot. No, 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 I never got a mail-in ballot, I know what you're talking about. Went home, got my sample ballot. On the sample ballot, it said mail in this form, and you will get your mail-in ballot. No, then, oh, well, okay, and the young man was a very nice man, very nice young man. Joseph was very professional and very courteous. I've got to tell you, he was great, because I was riled that I couldn't have my ballot to vote, you better believe it. So, then, I went home, got the sample, and I have the form. I did not mail in for a mail-in ballot, and in the past, all I've had to do is go to where I voted, and they gave me a ballot, and I voted. This time, no. It was something different they were doing, or for whatever. Now, I'm not saying it's a bad thing. They were making sure that I had not voted with a mail-in ballot, which we know there has been in the past some violations on that. But on the other hand, I was really vile, I mean, riled. I mean, why would I want to vote twice when I have been completely against that type of thing? Anyway, I did end up going to the police station, and I was very courteously given another ballot, the same as what I would have received in the mail. Apparently, both my ballot and my grandson who lives with me, those mail-in ballots, we never received at my home. Now, I don't know where they went or who got them, but I'm just saying, if you don't think you're not mad when you want to vote, and it took me two hours, from 1 o'clock going to the Mariposa, going home, finding that sample.
Thank you, Margaret.
And then going to the police station, and I was like, you know, I'm going to vote with my, I don't want a provisional. I've heard too much about provisionals, they don't count them at the end. If they don't want them, they don't count them.
No, you're done, Margaret, your time is up.
Well, I know, but you let all kinds of people go on for hours, but suddenly, me, I'm off. But okay, thank you very much, I appreciate your courtesy.
Well, the first thing I want to say is, you've got it wrong with the quote-unquote banquet hall. It's not the ANC. ANC is one Armenian organization, and they're not all the same. So, that may or may not be coming before us at council. That's something that you'll certainly be having a chance to address us in particular with, and address those issues when the issue is properly before us. The other, the other comment is, I mean, if they try to verify your, I mean, you complained that you thought it was too loose with some of the voting in previous years, now they're trying to tighten down the system, and now you get frustrated. Now, imagine, Margaret, if you were not an English speaker, and you were someone that wasn't, didn't know where the police department was, and didn't have the ability to drive out there, I think you would agree that that might be a little inconveniencing for someone that did not have your abilities and your knowledge. So, I guess my point is, it's a balance that we're trying to strive between accuracy and having the polls open to the most number of people that can legitimately be entitled to cast a vote. But I appreciate your comments and your compliments on several of the workers. I know that Mr. Kasakian will be taking note of that. Mr. Weaver.
I wanted to add that, Margaret, you're wrong again. That's the Armenian Society of Los Angeles, totally different than the ANC. As you know, I voted against that. But I was there a month or two ago when they had the dedication inside. It was warmly received. I toured the entire three-story facility, nicely designed with offices in it, yes, and in the center court. They have a nice, large room, you can call it a meeting room, a banquet room, whatever you want to call. Got toured through the kitchen, a beautiful kitchen. All that's in the past. I think what they're asking for is a liquor license in there to go along with the meetings. And I don't think that will come to us at all. It may, okay, it may.
It's before the zoning hearing officer now, and depending on what that ruling is and if it's appealed, it could potentially come before you.
It's nice, noise is not going to be heard outside because it's in the inner court, it's totally surrounded by offices and whatever. I think it's a very nice building. I didn't agree with how it got to where it is, but that's the past, it's done. Can't go back. But I think Armenian Society of Los Angeles will grow and prosper, and that's location where they serve the youth of this community quite a bit. Thank you.
Mr. Quintero.
I was going to make the same comment, Armenian Society of Los Angeles, although in fact, it's been headquartered in Glendale for probably over 30 years. They had a beautiful little building right on Brand, the principal street here in the city of Glendale. They were forced to move. It was an older, and is an older population in this particular organization, and I'm happy that they're finally settled in their new building. In fact, there's not a bridge to go from the parking structure to the hall. It's actually at grade level. And, yeah, another thing, actually, you went to the election headquarters, Margaret. It happens to be housed in the police community room, but it's actually the election headquarters that has been set up.
Anything else? Ms. Friedman?
Well, since she wasn't here last week, and nobody knew it was her birthday, I just wanted to wish Margaret a happy birthday. You going to tell us how old you are? You don't have to.
Mr. Hani.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I must, I would like to respond to whether or not the Planning Division has kept it a secret. There has been no secret. There has been an application. The second the application was submitted for the banquet facility, it was duly noticed, and in all the different versions of noticing that we need to do, it was held by a public hearing, by a hearing officer, and we will be continuing the process per the zoning code. And if Ms. Hammond or anybody else would like to know more about the case, I'll be happy to answer that question.
That's what I don't know.
Thank you very much. Okay, I think we have some new business. Does someone have the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement to utilize the legal services of the Zapia Law Firm, Edward Zapia, to represent the interests of the appointing authority before the Civil Service Commission in three personnel matters, and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for the handling of said matters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. Is there any other new business?
I also would like to move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement with the law offices of Lawrence Beach, Allen &amp; Choi, to represent Officer Michael Izaraga in the matter titled Yosefian versus City of Glendale et al., case number B.C. 450957. The retainer agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for work as assigned by the city attorney.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes. That concludes any business?
In.
Motion to adjourn in memory of Judge Howard Thaylon. Second by Councilmember Draymond. We adjourn.
Thank you.